Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorain County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
This is our top dog for the day. Quit talking to the dog. The dog is well behaved; it's our county employees who aren't.
That'll get you in trouble now.
Can you sit down? Can you sit down? Can you sit? You don't know, they're talking to you from all over. Come here. Come here. Sit down. Now, I won't be able to get up. Come here. Come here. Come on. We want you to be on TV. This is a lab mare. She doesn't want to be bothered. She's about three to four months old. She's available at our dog kennel on Alariah Oberlin Road by Alariah City Discount, starting Saturday, September 10th. She's a really good little dog. She was at the Labor Fest in Lakeview Park, greeting all the people.
And a very curious dog.
Yes, and I just don't have Lori's touch, okay? All right? There. Oh, look how nice. She says, "There." Says, "Am I done now?" Aw. She's making a nice pet for someone, so stop by our dog kennel and see what we have to offer. Remember, she's available on Saturday, September the 10th, for adoption. Now, Mr. Cortez, you can help me get up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to our September 8th meeting. Commissioner Kokoski's on vacation this week. We've had an exciting couple of weeks. We've been at the fair, then we were at the Labor Fest, and we were at the college last week. It's kind of nice to be back home.
It's nice to be back home.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
At 10 o'clock, there'll be a second public hearing on the CDBG ED for Whirlaway under resolutions, Job and Family Services bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
There are no investments, appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Excuse me, aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
I mean, yeah, whatever.
Transfers?
Also moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved. You're contagious.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Authorized various personal actions as indicated on summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction Lorain County Board of Commissioners?
Commissioners, at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today, I will be asking for a executive session to discuss potential new hires, update you on a matter of litigation, and possibly talk about bargaining unit issue for permissible discussions under the Sunshine Law. And I do understand that we may have to take a break from that executive session because you have a function to attend. So just for the record, we'll be going in, and then they'll be going to the function and coming back, and we'll reconvene the executive session.
Thank you.
Approved change order number seven to Fairweather Roofing, Avon, in the amount of $1,367.25 for an allowance adjustment to cover the cost of the penthouse louvers at Lorain County Justice Center. Authorized County Administrator to execute such change orders on behalf of the board.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Children and Families Council, approve various addendums to Help Me Grow Fiscal Year '05 contracts between Lorain County Board of Commissioners, Administrative Agent, for Lorain County Children and Families Council for the fiscal year '05 Help Me Grow Program effective July 1st, 2004 through June 30, 2005.
And this is to close out the year, correct?
Yes.
That's correct, Commissioner. It's to rebalance the contracts, try to get the maximum amount of funding into these contracts before we have to balance out and return any surplus to the state. I'm comfortable that we're returning the least amount of money possible, correct, Mr. Crespo?
Correct, Mr. Crespo.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Community Development, award contract to Elite Excavating Company of Ohio, Inc., Mansfield, for water and sewer facility project in the city of Oberlin in the amount of $82,400. CDBG fiscal year '04 funds account, 126042501450401, will be provided in the amount of $26,500, and the remaining balance of $55,944 will be paid by the city of Oberlin. Two bids were received, this being the most responsive. This project involves installation of new sanitary sewer manholes, four on Main Street and three on Grove Land Street. Issue notice to proceed letter effective honor before September 8th to be completed honor before December 31st. And authorize County Administrator to notify the county auditor to release retainers at the completion of said project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Instruct the clerk to advertise notice, a second public hearing for the filing of an application with the state of Ohio to participate in the Small Cities Economic Development Program to be held on Thursday, September 22nd, 2005, at 10:00 a.m. This is for the village of La Grange to receive $406,441 towards off-site infrastructure improvements to be made by the village of La Grange and La Grange Township, which will allow for location of physician's office, skilled nursing facility, and a software company to locate in a newly created business park and create 90 new full-time equivalent jobs. Notice will be published in the Chronicle-Telegram on Friday, September 9th and 16th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Right.
Support the CDBG Economic Development Grant application submitted by Whirlaway Corporation in Wellington Village to Ohio Department of Development. This will improve the water system, including construction of a 250,000-gallon elevated water tank to service Whirlaway's expansion needs.
I'm certainly glad I looked up, Mr. Twining.
I even wiggled the mic, so you might hear that.
We're just on a roll here.
Madam Chairman, at 10 o'clock today, we will hold the second public hearing on this issue, so respectfully, I ask that you hold this matter until after the public hearing.
Hold number 14.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm so glad I caught your eye.
Instruct the clerk to advertise notice of public of a finding of no significant impact on the environmental combine notice and notice of intent to request release of funds on September 9th in the Morning Journal.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Men Lorain County Planning Commission bylaws effective November 1st, 2005, Article 1, Item B, quorum, and Article, Item D, conflict of interest.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Approve the fiscal year '05 Small Cities Formula Grant Agreement in the amount of $424,000.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Establish alternate appointments in Lorain County Planning Commission. There are eight citizen members plus three members of the Board of County Commissioners appointed. Said eight alternates by Ohio Revised Code 713.22 will be appointed annually, and three members of the Board of Commissioners members appointed by term of the commissioner.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, approve a purchase of service agreement between Lorain County Department of Job and Family Services and Oberlin Early Childhood Center Oberlin using childcare quality funds for state fiscal year 2006. This will provide artistic experiences, the traveling art group program, to children attending childcare centers and daycare homes. Agreement is effective September 8th, 2005, through June 30th, 2006, in the amount of $35,555. And authorize Director of Job and Families to execute on behalf of the board.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Authorize Lorain County Department of Job and Family Services to enter an agreement with Speedway Super American LLC of Ian, Ohio, for the purchase of prepaid fuel cards using TANF funds. The value of the contract will not exceed $200,000. And authorize Director of Job and Families to execute on behalf of the board.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Solid Waste, approve the grant request of various school PTA Alariah in the amount of $23,788.14 for the handicap playground project equipment.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under CBCF, approve change orders for various contractors to extend the date of substantial completion from August 31st to September 19th, 2005, due to delays with window delivery, excessive time for plan review of fire sprinkler design, and delay in inspection and testing of fire sprinkler by local building authority. Authorize County Administrator to execute such change orders on behalf of the board with Sites Builders, Inc., Broadview Heights, Imperial Heating and Cooling, Inc., Solon, and Higgins Electric Company, Alariah.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Children's Services, instruct the clerk to advertise for the bids for Lorain County Children's Services leased vehicles. This notice will be published in the Morning Journal on September 13th and 20th, and bids to be open at 2:30 p.m. on September 27th in the Commissioners' Public Hearing Room.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the Sanitary Engineer, authorize Lorain County Auditor to levy special assessments for water line maintenance against all property within various county sewer districts for the tax duplicate year 2005, collectible in the year 2006. Sewer District 53, the cost is $183,515.15 with a percentage of 3% and amount of $5,505.45. Sewer District 55 is $580,450, percent is 10.50 with the amount of $60,947.25. Sewer District 56, $571,647.50, 6% at $34,298.85. Number 58 is at $53,057.11 at 13.50% with an amount of $7,162.71. And number 59 is $72,634.89 with a percentage of 13.50 and an amount of $9,805.71.
Also moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Commissioners, I'm going to respectfully request that you hold this until you're talking to council on legal update and executive session. I want to check on a piece of information. I got something from the Sanitary Engineers' office this morning, and I want to verify that we're all on the same page. I thought we were, but I want to just clarify one fact, so we don't have to come back and relook at this.
I withdraw my motion.
Thank you. I'm sorry I didn't speak up sooner.
Number 25, intend to proceed with the detailed plans, specifications, estimated costs, and detailed intent of assessments for the Dunn Road Sanitary Sewer Extension Project Sheffield Township.
This is a petition project?
That's correct, Commissioner. This is, number 25 and number 26 are sewer projects in Sheffield Township that have been being worked on for at least a decade, gaining the needed number of signatures for requirement for the petition sewer. There's an excess of 62% of the property owners that are petitioning for these sewers. We also are working with the railroad to get the right of way. We purchased some parcels and some easements and finished some contracts with them, so that we can go under the railroad over on Pearl Avenue. We still have a long way to go from this. You're not approving the sewer here. You're only approving the material that's been submitted, and we need this, so we can go to starting to have the public meetings, the notice of tentative assessments. And it's quite a lengthy process, but this is the step that's necessary to begin that process and treat you to public hearings on sewers, which will be quite rewarding, Commissioner Kayla, for you, since you've never had those.
I'm looking forward to them, Mr. Cortez.
Thank you.
When the residents get their estimated cost of assessments, they'll be rewarding for everybody. Also move for approval of item number 25.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Intend to proceed with the detailed plans, specifications, estimated costs, and tentative assessments for the Rolling Heights allotment sanitary sewer extension project in Sheffield Township.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, receive and file the annual reports submitted by Lorain County Sheriff's Office of all fines and costs collected by the Sheriff's Office for the year next preceding September 1st, 2005. This is in compliance with Ohio Revised Code 311.16, and the total amount of fines and costs collected are in the amount of $433,512.07.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
We're going to skip to 29 first, and then we'll go to 28. Support and approve Lorain County Sheriff to apply for fiscal year '05 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program additional funds. United States Attorney General's Office has appropriated an additional $10 million to said program. Application is due September 19th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Number 18 actually is under the detention home, so domestic relations.
Number 28.
Correct.
I said 18.
28. Instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for food service at Lorain County Detention Home. Notice will be published in the Chronicle-Telegram on September 13th and 20th, and bids to be open at 2:00 p.m. on September 27th in Commissioners' Public Hearing Room.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez, County Administrator?
Commissioners, I have a request that came in this morning from the Job and Family Services to purchase two computers. I'll pass it to you, and if you would pass that to the clerk after looking at it. They had some equipment go down. Our IT director worked cooperatively with them yesterday and well into the night to try to gain competitive bids. They need this equipment immediately to keep working. I believe that they've done their due diligence to make sure that we're not paying any more than we need to. I normally like to bring these from the floor, but they require this equipment immediately. And I ask you to pass a resolution authorizing them to make that purchase. I think there's a little verbiage there if the clerk wants to read it, or you can just approve the purchase of those two computers. How do you see fit?
Also moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
I have no further discussion points. Just one, thank you.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant County Prosecutor?
Just as indicated, I would like to request an executive session. There's a number of matters our office regarding pending litigation that we need to update you.
Commissioners report.
Do you want to go first this week? That way you can start?
No.
That way you get something to talk about?
No. It's your turn. It's your turn.
As Commissioner said earlier, it's been a very busy week between the fair and the transportation summit, which I felt went very well, and I want to thank the college for putting it together along with the alliance. And Labor Fest was wonderful. We got to speak to a lot of people out there, the constituents, and very positive. I'd like to thank all our departments who showed up out there. They did a very good job. We were represented very well.
Now, it's your turn, Commissioner.
Thank you. Because we're not in sync here, I forgot the thought for the day, so I'll give it to you now. And I love this one. This is from Doug Wilber, General Manager of W OBL Radio, who is with the Class of 1986 from Leadership Lorain County. It says, "The smarter I get, the more I realize how much I have to learn." That was good. The break that we're going to take this morning is for the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Bullock's Parkway at 11:30. It's quite an event for the city of Alariah. The newspaper says that they've worked on that through four administrations, and our representation at Nowacko was helpful in getting some dollars for that, so I'm pleased that we're going this morning. And that's all I have to offer today. Don't forget to come and get your dog at the dog kennel.
I just have two notations here. The Carlisle and Lynx Nation Public Hearing on September 12th and 13th.
You probably need a motion on that.
Yes. On 2005 will be continued until October 24th and 25th, 2005, at 9:30 a.m., which has been agreed by all parties involved. So I need a motion in order to do that.
Also move that the annexation hearing be continued to October 24th and 25th.
I'll second it with a twisted arm.
And just to let you know, we might not need Tuesday. They're hoping to get it in one day, so if that makes you feel better.
At 9:30?
At 9:30, correct. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Also, Lorain County Transportation Improvement District will not meet today at 11:00 a.m. This has been postponed with the date to be announced at a later date.
Can I offer an amplification there, please? Just to keep everybody updated. We had some problems with the grant that was coming from the state because of their desire for us to have an independent federal ID number for the Transportation Improvement District. And my office has been working back and forth with them, and I somewhat convinced them that we can't have a federal ID number and everything set up, and we've never had any money. So it's a chicken and egg routine. They have agreed, and I sent off correspondence yesterday to them, asking them to allow the county, as was always our intent as we started to grow the TID, to administer the finances for the Transportation Improvement District. And I indicated to them that we were established under the code, we had the office, we had the bylaw. So the TID is actually an operating entity, but it just doesn't have any funding or staff right now, and we're not prepared to have that much independence. They have agreed to resubmit the grant request back to the controlling board down to state and have it reissued to the county to administer on behalf of the TID. I'm hopeful that within the next few weeks, we'll have more update on that, and we'll finally get the funding, so that we can work with it. Because it's not 100% guaranteed, and it's still got to go to another board, I thought it may be premature for us to start meeting. I'd like to have something inked, and once I have that, Commissioners, we'll move very expeditiously to get the TID board together and start working on using that money for the betterment of the community.
Thank you.
Board Correspondents?
I move the reading to wave.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board, please come to the microphone. We have 10 minutes before the public hearing time, but your comments, please limit them to three minutes. I mean, we've got three speakers.
Morning, Commissioner. David Ashenhurst, Oberlin. Regarding number 15, is it possible we could get just a little more information on what that notice of a public finding and notice of intent to release funds, I mean, what project that relates to? That's my first question.
Ron will tell you.
This is our 2005 CDBG Formula Grant. We have, I think there were 11 activities in 2005. We've received the grant agreement last week, and in order to be able to receive those funds, draw those funds down, and work on projects, we have to go through this environmental review, so this is a formal action to take that.
Thank you, Ron.
My other question is for you, too. I just, my second question is in reference to number 16 and number 18, the alternate appointments to the Planning Commission and revision of bylaws. I know that's mostly housekeeping and straightening up, but I've been following it a little bit with the Planning Commission. I wonder if we could have a little more information on what has been done there. Thank you.
With the bylaws, there were a couple of items that we'd run into some issues, minor issues, on procedure. We needed to know what a quorum was, should somebody declare themselves having a conflict of interest on an item in front of the Planning Commission. We have 11 members on the Planning Commission, six constitutes a quorum. We had one situation where a member declared that they had a conflict of interest, and that took us from the seven members at that meeting down to six, and we said, geez, what would happen if we went below that six? Would we have to not vote on that one item or not vote on anything, because we lost a quorum? We consulted and worked for the last two or three months with Mr. Ennis at the prosecutor's office, and while there was no issue, we decided to address it in the bylaws, and we defined what a conflict was, how they went about the process of notification as early as possible on a potential conflict, so that we would be prepared. So that dealt with the conflict of interest, and then the quorum simply said, and we made it clear, that an abstention on a vote was a neutral vote. It wasn't an affirmative vote or a negative vote. We wanted to make sure that that was in there, and we also said that a quorum, even if someone declared themselves in conflict, the quorum still existed for that meeting. So that was the two issues on the bylaws. Frankly, since 1998, when I arrived at the county, I have been guilty of being a little lax on how we designate the alternates for our citizen members, eight of which, eight of the 11 members, and we were allowing those committee members to appoint their own alternate. While we were looking at the bylaw changes, we asked Mr. Ennis to look at that and realize that the state law is pretty clear about that, and they are to be appointed, all alternates are to be appointed by the Board of Commissioners. So we're cleaning up our house, and we've gone through the process of asking the members to designate their alternate, and then officially today, we asked the Commissioners to appoint the alternates for those members.
Does that address your questions, David? Thank you, Ron. Elizabeth?
Elizabeth Rummix, Oberlin. I would just like to make a comment in connection with number 19, the Oberlin Early Childhood Center. Recently, I heard people discussing the state achievement results in the Oberlin schools and so on, and it seemed to be very clear evidence the children who had gone through the Early Childhood Center training and experience were scoring very well on the achievement tests. There seems to be indeed a very noticeable success rate so far as the children are concerned, which I thought was very interesting news, because if that good foundation is laid, then as they go on through the schools, they will have better and better experiences. And the other thing is, partly in connection with the Commissioners and the counties working And the other thing is, partly in connection with the Commissioners and the counties working with the dog shelter and bringing in those very attractive dogs, I would like to just make a general announcement that in Oberlin, on September 24th, there's going to be a pooch parade, which I regret to say is also being advertised as a doggie do. The plans are quite interesting. It's the first time. There will be 80-some dogs, about 12 rescue groups from around the county, vendors with dog products, agility course and obedience training, contests, owners looking most like their dogs and vice versa, the biggest dog, et cetera, et cetera, and a parade at 3:00 with dog floats. It looks as if it's going to be quite a fun day. The website is oberlin.org. And Dick Goddard of Fox 8 News will be the emcee. So people who have any interest in dogs, or might have some interest in dogs, or wonder why they don't have interest in dogs, would certainly, I think, enjoy September 24th in Oberlin.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Anyone else who would like to address the board? Okay. Well, what watch are we looking at? What does your watch say, Commissioner?
I'm at 9:59.
9:59. Well, but when I tried...
I want to know who turned it back five minutes.
When I tried to use that as my official, he told me I did it late on purpose. He's never late. He's always early is on time and on time is late, except this morning.
I was doing something else, Commissioner. I'm sorry. I thought we were well represented with you at the CIC.
Oh, yes. You are so funny. Okay. 10:00, second public hearing on community development, block grant, Whirlaway. Mr. and Ms. Rebecca Jones, Economic Development Director, associate, whatever, thanks, Yvonne, whatever she is. Wait a minute. Economic Development Coordinator. I knew she had a proper title. Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Rebecca Jones, Lorraine County Community Development Department. The purpose of this public hearing today is to discuss an application to the Ohio Department of Development for funding under the Community Development Block Grant Economic Development Program, a federally funded program administered by the state. Before funds can be awarded, two public hearings must be held. The first public hearing was held on February 10th, 2005, and explained the program guidelines and general objectives. The second public hearing, which is being held today, is to explain a specific project that is being considered. This public hearing gives us the opportunity to hear from persons, organizations, and officials throughout the county concerning the use of CDBG funds for this project. The CDBG program was established under the Housing and Community Development Act that was passed in 1974 and amended in 1992. Funding for HUD entitlement communities is dispersed directly from the federal government, whereas small cities' CDB allocations are dispersed through the state. The Act established three national objectives. An activity must meet at least one of the following national objectives to receive CDBG funds. One, benefit low and moderate income persons and/or households. Two, aid in the elimination of slum and blight conditions. Three, meet an urgent community development need. Under the CDBG Economic Development Program, funds are primarily used for job creation, business retention, or attraction. At least 51% of the jobs created must be made available to low and moderate income persons and/or households. The county has been asked to apply for $300,000 of FY '05 CDBG funding for infrastructure grant assistance to the Village of Wellington to support the Whirlaway Corporation expansion project. Whirlaway Corporation will be expanding its operations and purchasing $2.5 million in manufacturing machinery and equipment to service a Copeland 5G USD valve assembly contract at its Wellington location. This expansion will allow the company to create 30 new full-time equivalent machine operator positions. At least 22 of the new jobs will be made available to persons from low and moderate income households. In order to accommodate this project, the Village of Wellington must make improvements to its water system, including the construction of a 250,000 gallon elevated water tank to service Whirlaway's expanded operations. The total project cost is approximately $3.2 million. The total cost of the infrastructure improvements will be $685,865. The Village of Wellington has committed $396,865 towards the project. The Lorraine County Economic and Industrial Development Corporation has reviewed this application and made a recommendation to the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners to approve. Following this public hearing, the Board of Commissioners will consider the resolution authorizing submittal of the grant application. Once approved, the entire application will then be forwarded to the Ohio Department of Development for their review and authorization.
Thank you, Rebecca. At this time, I'll entertain any comments from anyone in the audience who has comments, questions regarding this grant application. Seeing none, I move that this public hearing be closed. I'm getting it. Thank you, Theresa. Ms. Blair?
Aye. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
I'm getting it this morning. Okay. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the application as outlined and detailed in item number 14.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Okay. And thank you.
Whirlaway.
Fine job. Rebecca and your department, Mr. Twining Lauren from Pogomeyer, thank you very much. Okay, then I move we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the administrator and our legal counsel.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Unsightly litter is often the result of well-intentioned people like you and me being careless at the curb, around business areas, and at work sites. Lucky, the ladybug, Ohio's First Lady of Litter Prevention, says, "Nobody wants to live or work around trash." Litter lowers property values and it's costly to clean up.
Keep Lorraine County beautiful.
Welcome to Golden Acres, Lorraine County's best-kept secret. In the heart of Lorraine County, we are nestled on 22 acres of rolling hills in Amherst Township. Our rural-like setting is centrally located for everyone's convenience.
Since 1997, when the Golden Acres tax levy was voluntarily abandoned, the home has been self-sufficient. We currently serve private pay, and Medicaid residents are in the process of becoming a Medicare skilled nursing facility, which will enable us to provide a wider range of service to the residents of Lorraine County.
Serving Lorraine County for over 100 years, Golden Acres will continue to strive to provide the highest possible degree of health, social interaction, and emotional well-being.
While selecting the best place for your loved one is never easy, many families take great comfort in choosing the friendly, homelike environment of Golden Acres. Certified by the Ohio Department of Health as an intermediate care facility, Golden Acres participates in the Medicaid reimbursement program. The facility anticipates certification as a skilled facility. Golden Acres has 82 intermediate care beds, 20 of which are for specialized care of Alzheimer and related dementia patients. Designed by the Golden Acres Gerontologist Consultant, the Alzheimer unit meets the needs of dementia residents who are prone to wandering and not mindful of their safety needs. Small by today's large facility standards, Golden Acres is a full-service, patient-family-oriented facility, operating 24 hours per day, seven days per week, under the guidelines of the Ohio Department of Health. Respite care is also available, ideal for those who are caring for their loved one at home and need a break from the 24-hour vigilance. Golden Acres provides residents a variety of services. As a four-season facility, Golden Acres celebrates each season with attractive decorations throughout the facility. In December, holiday festivities abound. Spring is a time of renewal, and celebrations include the annual Mother's Day tea. In the warm months, Golden Acres residents and their families enjoy congregating outside on the patio or in the gazebo, spending lazy summer afternoons and evenings in the shade. Fall brings hazy days and cool nights, Halloween and Thanksgiving, bonfires and hayrides. A monthly newsletter, Golden Acres Chit Chat, contains entertaining articles and information relevant to all residents and family members, including the monthly activities calendar. Golden Acres also schedules visits from dental, podiatry, optometry, audiology, and psychiatric services. Butician visits weekly, and barber visits monthly.
While no facility could take the place of your loved ones at home, our caring staff, residents, and their families will strive to make them feel at home and a welcome part
Hey, buddy. How you doing there? Here, have a treat, okay? No one can deny the loving devotion we get from our dogs, and I think we all agree, we get back more love than we give them. I'm Dick Goddard. I'm reminding you, if you share your love with a dog, you'll never regret it. There is really nothing like a dog to spark up your life, whether you're a youngster, a senior citizen, or somewhere in between. And dogs have a whole lot of affection to share. Okay? Is that good? You don't have to go far to hear heartwarming adoption stories.
With my husband is like saying man's best friend. He truly loves that dog. He feels it's part human. It's his second daughter, as Erica said. It's definitely a prize. She's queen of the house, basically. She's a good lover. She gives us a lot of attention. She's a good girl.
We had a cat before. We had Abby. And Abby adapted very well. She is best friends with that cat. She will not harm that cat in any way. She's amazing. I love her. When I'm in bed at night, Abby will jump up with me, and she will pull the covers back, and she will lay under the covers and lay her head on the pillow, just like a human.
I encourage anyone to go to the Lorraine County Kennel to adopt a dog. It's given our family great satisfaction and a great reward.
After, you know, a bad day at work, or anytime you come home, it's just always nice to kind of turn your mood around when you come in the door, and they wagging their tails and jumping on you. It's a great feeling to know that they're happy to see you and that they love you just as much as you love them. She is good with our other dog. She's good with people. She likes attention, and she likes to cuddle up with you.
It's funny, when Lily, when you kind of discipline her sometimes when she does something bad, or she always seems to roll on her back and put her paws in the air and just look up at you with a sad look. So it's kind of hard to even get mad at her when she does something like that. So we kind of laugh at that.
And it's always amusing when she does get a spurt of energy and want to run around. And I was like, oh, my gosh, Lily's good to play now.
Yeah, because like, I'm on the couch or whatever, and she'll hop down, and she always like tries to bite her own tail. And then that kind of like keys on our other dog, Rocky, to chime in and try to, you know, bite her tail a little bit, and then they start playing around a little bit.
One day, we came home with some food from, I just really wanted a burger. So we had a burger, and I had it sitting on the tray table by the couch. And I got up for a minute and got a drink, came back, and Lily was licking her lips. She had eaten the whole thing, and I was not very happy with her. So I screamed and told Kurt to come down and get her away from me because I was just so upset. But we both lived, and I was fine afterwards. One of the best things about adopting a dog from the kennel, at least for us, was, again, just giving this dog, who knows what would have happened to her, a new life, and also giving our other dog a companion during the day. It's just fun to have the two dogs and take them for walks and watch them play, and it brought us closer as well.
You know, it just makes you feel better as a person, that, you know, you're giving a dog a better chance to live a life.
Actually, I enjoy the exercise because I need to, trying to lose weight, Salem makes me get out of the house every day. And so I have to take him for a walk, even if I don't want to. And he's not that much trouble because he was pretty much housebroken when I got him from the pound. I really like the older pet because Salem was kind of, whoever had him before, they really kind of housebroken. So I didn't really have to go through the potty training deal. I just had to let him out and find a place for him to go. And I think older pets, especially for people who don't have children, are kind of good because Salem, he's real playful, but he's not, he gets tired, and he lays down, and he doesn't want to be bothered, and that's fine with me. So he's not always wanting to play, you know, because puppies have a lot of energy. And Salem has quite a bit of energy, but sometimes he just lays on his pillow, and he's like, don't bother me, I won't bother you. And sometimes when he wants to play, he wants to play, and that's okay. I got Salem at the Lorraine County Dog Pound. I found him on the internet, actually. He was, they had his picture on the internet, and so I called, and he was still there. And so I immediately went over and looked at him. We went outside and played, and he jumped in the car and wouldn't get out, and there we were. So we rode our way home. It was love at first sight. He's a very good companion. I can always depend on him to be here and greet me with, you know, open arms when I come in the door. He's very protective of me, and he lets me know when anyone is outside or in the driveway. So I feel safe with Salem, you know, even though he's a small dog. He gives me a safe feeling just in my own home. If I'm having a bad day sometimes and I'm just not in a real good mood, you know, he'll come up and snuggle up to me like, hey, Mom, it's okay. I think other people should adopt a pet, and even an older dog. The Lorraine County Pound has so many wonderful dogs. All you have to do is go over there and look. I mean, even now, I still go on the website and I tell Salem, don't you want a little brother or sister? Because they have all these little cute dogs over there, and they all need good homes. And if you're looking to adopt a pet, I suggest you try the Lorraine County Dog Pound first. I mean, you pay for the license and just a nominal fee, and you got a great dog and a great companion and somebody that's going to be in your life for the rest of your life, and they'll love you no matter what.
Hello. My fellow Commissioners and I are here at the Lorraine County Dog Kennel on Haddaway Street, just south of Alari City Discount Value City. We invite you to stop out and see the facility here. We have lots of dogs available for adoption. We also encourage all dog owners to register your dog each year and get a dog license. That's your dog's ticket home in case it gets lost. It has a number and can easily be identified so that your dog can be returned to you in case he or she might take a little walk and you are unaware of it.
Along with the regular licensing that the county requires for all dogs, we also have a special dog license. It's a Special Heart Medical Care License Tag for an additional $5. And the proceeds from that go to help us when we pick up a stray that's injured, hurt, or needs extreme medical care. It helps defer the cost for us. So next time you get your dog license, please pick up the Special Heart Tag.
The Lorraine County Commissioners would like to welcome you to come down to the Lorraine County Dog Kennel. We also...